At this time, I would like to call to order the meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for February 16th, 2023, beginning at 7:00. The Board of Trustees on February 16th, 2023, beginning at 7:00 PM will convene in closed At this time, I will reconvene into open session the meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for February 16th, 2023, beginning at 7:01 PM. Members of the public may access the meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustee may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the Administration Building. Thank you all for joining us tonight, and we apologize for the delay. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted by the security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Ms. McMurro in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The first item on our agenda are programs and presentations. Mrs. Foster?
Good evening, everybody, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, President Fowler, everyone here, which is a huge group of people tonight, and everyone who's watching online. I just want to welcome everybody. We are going to kick it off tonight with a phenomenal performance. You've heard the warm-up. Now, you're going to hear the real deal from the Bailey Junior High Symphonic Orchestra. They're under the direction of Michelle Schuster and Colin Tate. Now, this orchestra has been award-winning for over 30 years. They're always bringing home the UIL sweepstakes, the best in class, best in show, best in category, best in instrument, on everything they participate in. So, a very long history. They've had 21 students earn a regional spot in the Region Five, all district orchestra this year, and that is a very big deal. This past November, Arlington ISD celebrated 50 years of orchestra in our school district, and some of these folks actually got to play at the Center for Visual and Performing Arts as a part of that celebration. Mrs. Schuster and Mrs. Tate, they also performed as part of Celebration Orchestra, which are Arlington alumni who still participate in the orchestra. So, they got to play because they're both Arlington ISD graduates, and I believe, let's see, oh, Mrs. Schuster was even an alumni of Bailey Junior High. So, we are thrilled to have you guys tonight. We're going to turn it over to you for a special performance of "Afterburn" by Brian Bemalges.
My goodness. Are y'all sure they're only junior high students? That was awesome. Thank you, Ryan and Frank. Appreciate it. Oh, it's Anthony.
And Anthony.
Presentation B, Community Engaged for Excellence Award of Appreciation. Mr. Peralis?
Good evening, President Fowler, Superintendent Dr. Cavassos, and members of the board. Again, we come before you to just say thank you again to the wonderful community that blesses us every day in Arlington ISD. This evening, we're honored to recognize EECU, a nonprofit, not-for-profit credit union with a history that began in 1934 in the Fort Worth ISD Administration Building as a credit union for teachers and administrators. EECU believes that helping their neighbors across their many communities is a prerequisite for being a premier financial institution. In supporting AISD, EECU sponsors our Arlington ISD Teacher and Department Employees of the Month Award Program. This program recognizes our teachers and staff for their hard work, dedication, and inspiration to students. Each month, EECU provides $50 in $2 bills to our elementary, junior high, high school, and department-level employees of the month. Our recipients are always surprised and excited to see Dr. Cavassos and the team visit them with the recognition. And I know Ms. Curtis gets to be a part of that prize patrol, and what I understand is that the kids might have heard of a $2 bill, but they might have never seen it, so they really get excited to see a $2 bill right there. And there's $50 worth of those that they could see. For the past 20-plus years, EECU has supported the Kiwanis Woodrow Counts Teacher of the Year Award, which provides $500 to a district-wide elementary, junior, and high-school-level Teacher of the Year. An additional $100 is awarded to nine Teacher of the Year runners-up. This recognition is an event that our community looks forward to every school year. In supporting students in their dreams of a higher education, each year, EECU awards up to eight $5,000 scholarships for students in the metroplex who are pursuing a four-year bachelor's degree. Awards are dispersed in $1,250 annual increments as long as a student continues to meet eligibility. This scholarship provides a boost to students as they progress through their college career. In supporting our AISD teachers and students, EECU is a collaborative partner that is always open to exploring engagement opportunities with our school district. It is an honor to recognize EECU at this time. Present with us are Mr. Jerry Cantu, Director of Schools and Community Relations, and, as I mentioned, Stephanie Curtis, Business Development Specialist, who is instrumental in those monthly visits with our teachers who get that honor. This time, I'd like to invite them up to the podium.
Dr. Cavassos and members of the board, I can't tell you how honored we are to receive this recognition. A lot of times, you know, we have to remind ourselves our relationship with Arlington ISD, and mine is more on a personal level. My daughter is a coach at Bailey Junior High, so it goes to show how great of a district it is, and she loves it there. And so, I have a personal vested interest in Arlington ISD as well. But, you know, we're here to really let you know, it's not really about accounts, it's not about loans, it's not about mortgages. It's about just saying thank you to the teachers, to the staff, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, everybody who puts forth the effort through everything that our educators have been through the last few years. And, you know, more importantly, it's just to say thank you. And I couldn't do it without Stephanie Curtis, and then also Priscilla Addis, who is the new branch manager for the Arlington branch as well. So, you will see her from time to time as well. But, you know, from the bottom of our hearts, thank you so much for this honor.
And on behalf of the board, I want to thank EECU for being such great partners with the district. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts, and we are the ones that are honored by having you here and having you touch our community as you do. Thank you for what you do for our teachers, what you do for our students. We thank you so very much for being such great partners. We appreciate you. May we come down and present you with something? On behalf of the Arlington ISD, we want to thank you so much again and present you with a little something to take back to the EECU branch. Thank you so much. Did we get a picture? Okay. We are now ready for Presentation C, our National Merit semifinalist, National Hispanic Recognition, and many more recognitions that Ms. Foster will now present.
It's going to be a wonderful evening as we honor our students who are some of the most outstanding that we have in the Arlington ISD. So, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, we have 141 scholarship or scholar recipients of a variety of different kinds of scholars that I'm going to go over tonight. But before we do that, I want to let you know that that is double, the number of scholars that we had last year. So, this is a huge, huge accomplishment. So, tonight, we're going to introduce the National Merit semifinalist, the National African American Recognition, the National Hispanic Recognition, and the Indigenous Recognition. We're going to say a few words about these programs so that everybody knows what these kids have accomplished to get to this point. But first off, as you can see by looking at the room, there's a lot here. We could not get all 141 in our room tonight, so we're split between two board meetings. So, there's one group here tonight, and the other half will come to the next board meeting on March the 2nd. We're really proud of y'all for maxing out the capacity of our boardroom with your hard work. It's really, really quite amazing. So, let me tell you about these different recognitions and let you know that, for the first time, all eight of our high schools in Arlington have scholars on this list. We're adding Dr. Ben Bolan with the Titan. Oh, I figured you'd go Titan. That's what I was waiting on. So, Dr. Ben Bolan with Arlington College and Career High School is being added to our list as he has his first graduating class of seniors this year, so we're super excited about that. The National Recognition Programs I want to go over tonight, I'm going to start with the National Merit Scholars. This program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships. It's available to students who take the PSAT, and they meet the published requirements. 1.5 million students apply for this program every year. Approximately 50,000 in the U.S. qualify for this type of recognition through this program, and tonight, we have seven Arlington ISD students who made that cut, so we're really excited about that. The National African American Recognition Program identifies outstanding African American high school students, and they share information about these students with colleges and universities. The National Hispanic Recognition Program recognizes those outstanding Hispanic scholars and shares information about these academically-prepared students with colleges and universities as well. This year, Arlington ISD is home to 44 African American scholars and 90 national Hispanic scholars. Huge deal. And we have two students who are going to receive the National Indigenous Recognition. A few other notable things to keep in mind about all of these, 78 of the 141 scholars started with the Arlington ISD in pre-K or kindergarten. And so, yes, so if you know someone that needs to sign up for pre-K, opens April 3rd, you can register, yes, right on our website. We also have juniors this year that are included in this program, and that hasn't always been the case, but we've got 48 juniors that are participating as well. So, that's very, very exciting. Okay, don't worry, y'all, I'm almost done. Y'all will appreciate this reaction from the crowd. The top three front-runners for college picks for our students, y'all can guess these right, UT, hook 'em, hook 'em, hook 'em. UT Arlington, go Mavs. Any Mavs in the house? Yes, just me? I'm the only one? Oh, there's two of us. Okay, I feel there's more. And of course, Texas A&amp;M. We knew that was coming. As for career choices, the top three front-runners are Biology, Nursing, and Engineering. So, this evening, these students will be the very first inductees into our 2223 Wall of Fame, that is our Arlington ISD Wall of Fame Honor, and you will all receive invitations to a ceremony that will be a penning ceremony. You'll get a Wall of Fame pin and be recognized throughout the legacy, your legacy, in Arlington ISD at a special event on June the 5th, so stand by for your invitations for that. So, normally, we go in alphabetical order, but we're going to switch up just a little bit tonight because we thought Ben Bolan should kick us off as being our first graduating class with scholars in this category. So, Dr. Bolan, I'll have you come up, you'll start, and then we're going to proceed with Arlington Collegiate High, followed by Bowie High School, Sam Houston High School, and then Segin High School. So, Dr. Bolan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for this opportunity to recognize these outstanding students across the district and all of their hard work that they've put in through their time here, and some of them, like we heard, started here in pre-K, so pretty exciting to hear what they've accomplished and find out what they're going to do next. So, I'm proud to announce our recipients from Arlington College and Career High School, and students, when I call your name, you can come on up here to the front, okay? Our first recipient is Jordan Kegler. Jordan is a National African American Recognition recipient. She's interested in attending either UTA, UNT, UTD, SFA, TCU, or Baylor, she's got a lot of options, and she's interested in studying psychology. All right, our next recipient is Angie Lemus. Angie is a National Hispanic Recognition recipient. She's a senior. She's interested in attending UTA, University of Houston, or University of North Texas, or the University of Texas at Austin, and she wants to study computer science. Our next recipient is Mercedes Martinez. Mercedes is a National Hispanic Recognition recipient. She's a senior. She's interested in attending either UT Austin, Baylor, Rice, or Columbia, and she wants to study psychology. Our next recipient is Ricardo Ramirez. Ricardo is a National Hispanic Recognition recipient. He's a senior, interested in attending Texas Tech, UNT, UTA, UT Austin, or Texas Wesleyan, and he is wanting to study accounting. Next is Everardo Reyes. Everardo is a National Hispanic Recognition recipient. He's a senior. He's narrowed down his choice to UT Austin, and he wants to study engineering. Next is Peter Ruiz. Peter is a National Hispanic Recognition recipient. He's a senior. He's going to attend Texas Wesleyan University and study finance. Next is Itzi Sanchez. Itzi is a National Hispanic Recognition recipient. She's a senior. She's interested in attending either Texas A&amp;M, Baylor, Texas Tech, Texas Women's University, UNT, or UTA, and she wants to study biology. Next is Catherine Umanzor. Catherine is a National Hispanic Recognition recipient. She is a senior. She's interested in attending UTA or UTD, and she wants to study architectural engineering. We had 18 recipients of these awards, and these were our students that could make it here, so I'd like to congratulate them and also the rest of our students that could not make it here this evening. Congratulations, you guys. All right, and so, they're going to introduce themselves and say a few words and introduce who they brought here with them.
My name is Jordan Kegler. I attend Arlington College and Career High School, and I just want to thank the board for having all of us here. I want to especially thank Dr. Ben Bolan and my counselor, Joanne Franks, for just being here with me on this journey. Here with me are my parents, Ricky and Amina Montgomery, who have supported me since I was very little. So, thank you all for having me here.
Hi, my name is Angie Lemus. I just want to say how grateful I am for the opportunity to attend ACCHS, and I would just want to thank my principal and my family for the support they gave me, and yeah, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mercedes Martinez. I want to thank everyone who has supported me along the way. I'm very thankful for this opportunity. And here tonight, my mother's with me, Oneida Guardado. I want to thank her for everything she's done despite the circumstances we have faced. Thank you very much, everyone.
Hello, my name is Ricardo Ramirez. I'm really grateful for my family that's here today, my mom, my sisters, and my brother couldn't make it, but I'm really grateful for him. And I really want to thank Dr. Bolan. He's actually an amazing principal, and he's helped, he's helped every student. He's great at his job.
My name is Everardo Reyes. Like they've said previously, I'm grateful for this opportunity to excel in our, I guess, college, college degrees, and I'm joined here tonight with my mother, Guermina Delara. Not really sure where she's at. Oh, I see her. Yeah, she's always been there to support me, and so has my other family, family members.
My name is Peter Ruiz. I'm a senior in, at ACCHS, and I would like to thank the board, the school board, for the opportunity to attend ACCHS, and I'd like to give a special thanks to my principal, Mr. or Dr. Ben Bolan, and Officer Gallegos, and my path teacher, Ms. Cooper, for being there for me along the way. I would also like to thank my family, my mother and father, Pedro and Maria Ruiz, along with my two little brothers for being here tonight with me, and yeah, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Itzi Sanchez. I just want to thank Dr. Bolan for the opportunity he's given to us at our school because not everyone gets the opportunity that we get. And I also want to thank my family because they've supported me like through everything and anything that I do. Here tonight are my parents, my siblings, and my aunt, and yeah, I'm just really grateful to be here. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Catherine Umanzor. I am thankful for the opportunity, given that we're the first graduating class from ACCHS. I want to thank the board and our principal, Dr. Ben Bolan, our counselor, our path teacher. Like everybody else said, we're grateful for the opportunity, and here today is my mom, Antonia Melgar, and my brothers couldn't make it, but I'm grateful for them too.
I would now like to introduce the principal of Arlington Collegiate High School, Mr. Jeff Krieger.
Good evening, Board President Fowler, Superintendent Dr. Cavassos, members of the board. It's my great honor and privilege. We have 26 scholars at our campus, 24 Hispanic scholars and two African American scholars. But before I start calling through my students, I want to make sure I give a shout-out to our incredible senior counselor, Ms. Kelly Hollick. She organizes, structures, and allows all these students to be so successful and puts them in great positions to be successful, so I want to make sure she gets the proper recognition on that. So, not all of our students are here, but I will just go through. Yes, 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 yes. So, I'll go through and call the students that are here with us tonight. First up is going to be Isaac Calores, National Hispanic Scholar. He is a junior. He's interested in Texas A&amp;M University and looking to major in marine biology. All right, next up is Eddie Duran, National Hispanic Scholar. He is a senior. He's looking at UT Arlington, Texas Creighton University, and the University of North Texas, and would like to major in electrical engineering. All right, next up is Samantha Fernandez, National Hispanic Scholar, interested in going to Texas Women's University, UT Arlington, UT Austin, A&amp;M, or UT Tyler, and majoring in nursing. All right, next up is Sergio Flores, another National Hispanic Scholar, one of our juniors, interested in going to UTA, Texas Wesleyan, and possibly the Culinary Institute of America. He likes the food. He's looking to major possibly in humanities. Fernando Gonzalez is next up on deck, one of our seniors. He's a National Hispanic Scholar, looking at UTA or UNT, looking to major in finance. Emily Guerrero is another National Hispanic Scholar for us, one of our seniors, and is looking- looking to go to the University of Texas at Arlington and major in fine arts. Next up is our junior Abel Fernandez. I'm sorry, let me try that again. Abel Hernandez, one of our juniors, looking to go to UTA, Texas A&amp;M, University of North Texas, or UT Austin, and major in mechanical engineering. Next up is Jerry Herrera, a National Hispanic Recognition Scholar, one of our seniors. He's been accepted to UTA, is waiting to hear back from UT Austin, Georgetown, the University of Chicago, Rice, John Hopkins, Stanford, and Washington University in St. Louis. I'll make sure he's interested in majoring in romance languages, literatures, and linguistics. All right, next up is Yessenia Martin, one of our National Hispanic Scholars. She's looking to go to UT Austin and major in computer science, and Yessenia is our valedictorian this year. All right, up next is Claire Martinez, one of our juniors, National Hispanic Scholar, looking at UTA, or more importantly, just wherever she can get the most money and go to school. Looking to major in nursing. Kai Mena is our next one, National Hispanic Scholar, senior, can go to University of, I'm sorry, Texas Christian University and majoring in biology. Eric Mendez, one of our seniors, National Hispanic Scholar, looking at UTA, UNT, and Texas Tech, looking to major in civil engineering. Maria Ortega is one of our National Hispanic Scholars. She is a senior. She is our salutatorian this year, looking to go to the University of North Texas or the University of Texas at Austin, majoring in psychology. Alexander Trejo, National Hispanic Scholar, senior, looking at UTA, UNT, UT Austin, Wesleyan, Sam Houston State University, or possibly Texas A&amp;M Commerce, looking to major in art education and illustration. And then up is Leslie Vasquez, looking to go to UTA and major in nursing.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Isaac Calores, and I attend Arlington Collegiate High School. I'd like to give a big thank you to my counselor and principal, Kelly Hollick and Jeff Krieger, and especially big thanks to my parents and my alfonso for always supporting me. I want to thank everyone for this opportunity tonight.
Good evening, everybody. I'm thankful for my principal and my counselor. They have helped me through everything, you know, throughout school, and I'm thankful for my parents, although they were not able to make it, but I know they're very proud.
Hi, my name's Samantha Fernandez, and I'm thankful for my principal and my counselor and my mom and sister for being here with me today.
All right, good evening. My name is Sergio Flores, and I'm really grateful to be standing up here, you know, given the opportunity to go to ACCHS, getting to meet all the amazing faculty and staff there who have helped me, as well as all my friends there, and of course, my family in the back. I love you guys. I can't, I can't say enough how much support you've given me. Thank you so much.
My name is Fernando Gonzalez, and I'm really thankful for Mr. Krieger and Ms. Hollick for reminding me, reminding me to come today. And here with me is my aunt, who actually brought me last minute, because my parents couldn't make it for the fact that I didn't know this was today. So I'm really thankful for her and for everybody here, the seniors, and my little brothers that are here, and yeah.
Hello, my name is Emily Guerrero. I want to say thank you to all the staff members and faculty at ACCHS. You guys have been amazing, especially Ms. Hollick, you've been great help, and Ms. Cole and Mr. Krieger. And I want to take a moment to say thank you to my parents and my sister who are here tonight with me. I love you guys so much. You guys have been such a great support for me and have motivated me so much to get, um, like, reach all my goals and just be here tonight, because I would not be here without you guys. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Abel Hernandez. I would like to thank Mr. Krieger and Ms. Hollick and Mr. Silos for forcing me to do my SAT prep. And gracias a mis papas por apoyarme. Thank you for my parents for supporting me throughout my school.
Good evening. My name is Jerry. First off, I'd like to thank Mr. Krieger and Ms. Hollick, especially Ms. Hollick for constantly putting up with me. I promise, I am sorry that you have to deal with me. And then my brother and brother-in-law for constantly pushing me and indulging my expensive tastes in food. So thank you to all of you. I really do appreciate y'all.
Hello, my name is Yessenia Martin. First, I want to thank Ms. Higerty, because she would make us do Khan Academy an hour, and it's due at eleven fifty-nine, so I got here because of her. I also want to thank Ms. Hollick. She's been through our college journey this whole four years, and she's really helped us out a lot, and I enjoy going to her office every day and just talking to her. I also want to thank Mr. Krieger for this opportunity and getting to know him and just making ACCHS feel like a family. I'm here with my mom and my cousin and my little sister, and I want to thank them for being my biggest supporters. My sister and my brother couldn't make it, oh, my dad couldn't either, but I know they're very proud of me.
You know, I had something planned, but right when I got the microphone, I kind of forgot. So I want to thank Mr. Krieger and Ms. Hollick. She also reminded me, which is kind of embarrassing to say, but she reminded me to come as well today. And Ms. Klaus, she has the biggest smile and makes my day as well. Everyone, I just love everybody. I'm a loving person. I just love everybody. And I want to just thank the board as well. Thank you so much for this opportunity. And mami, ma, te amo, and muchas gracias. And I just appreciate my mom a lot, and I love her. And yeah, I'm just really thankful for this opportunity. So, yeah.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kai Mena, and first off, I want to give thanks to all the staff and faculty that helped us out like throughout these four years. We couldn't have made it without y'all, especially Ms. Hollick, Mr. Krieger, Ms. Klaus, Ms. Silos, Ms. Cole. And also want to give special thanks to my parents, my mom, my dad, and my little sister that's right there, for helping me through everything. I really could have done it without y'all, and yeah.
Hello, my name is Eric Mendez, and I want to say thank you to Mr. Krieger and Ms. Hollick, and to all the teachers that I had in the past three or four years. And I also want to say thank you to my mom and my brother that are here. And honestly, it's been a great honor to be in ACCHS. It's a good school, and yeah.
Hi, my name is Maria Ortega. I just want to say very big thank you to both Mr. Krieger and Ms. Hollick. Honestly, you guys, I would be so lost without you. I don't know what I'm doing. I'm so thankful that they've helped me reach the point where I'm at right now, and I can honestly say that they helped me keep going and reaching more and more things. And right now, here is my mom. I'm very thankful for her. Muchas gracias, ma, por todo lo que haces por mí. My dad and my sisters couldn't be here tonight, but I'll be showing them the video later today, so, sisters, muchas gracias por todo lo que hacen por mí y por soportarme por todo lo que hago. I'm so thankful for you guys. I love you guys. I'm so thankful for these other seniors. They've honestly made this journey really amazing, and I've met so many great friends, and I'm looking forward to the future.
Hello, my name is Alexander Trejo, and I'm very thankful for my principal, Mr. Krieger, and my counselor, Ms. Hollick, especially her, for supporting me through my existential crisis. And I'm also very thankful for my parents, Eduardo Trejo y Alicia Tapoya, por siempre soportarme, porque siempre me han soportado. And I'm very thankful for my siblings as well, even though they couldn't make it, I know they're proud of me. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Vasquez, and I want to thank Mr. Krieger and Ms. Hollick for helping me through this journey, and I want to thank my parents for the support that they've helped me all the time through this journey.
All right, next up is going to be Mr. Lee Jones, principal of James Bowie High School.
Thank you, thank you for that introduction. Dr. Cavazos, thank you, President Fowler, members of the board, thank y'all for this opportunity to not only recognize the Bowie students who are here today, but all these lovely students in the AISD. I have two students here that I'm going to present. My first student is Mr. Hugh Hunn. He is a national merit semifinalist. He is our, is a senior here at Bowie High School. He has two colleges on the table. First one is UTA. The second one is the USMA, the United States Military Academy. He shared with me this week that he did get his certification or certificate for West Point, so awesome for him, and he is going to be majoring in medicine. Our second student that we have with us today is Ms. Casey Baca. She is a National African American Recognition, so come on up. She is an eleventh grader. She has a couple of colleges, University of Arlington, University of Texas at Dallas. Her dream school is the University of Chicago, Texas A&amp;M, and her major is engineering.
Well, obviously, my name is Hugh Hunn, and I'm here today. I would like to say thank you to Mr. Jones and my peer here, because my family couldn't make it, but that's okay, because they kept me great company. And I would also like to say big thanks to my family, because obviously, they're my family. And, but more than that, my brother especially. Seriously, if it wasn't for him, I would not be standing here today, because it was the beginning of summer break after sophomore year. I was just chilling, you know, enjoying the break, had my feet kicked up on my table and everything, and he came up to me out of the blue, and he told me the most life-changing words I've ever heard. He told me, "You are going to study for the SAT for the next three months, every single day." And that's exactly what I did. I hated it at first, but, I mean, look, look where I am now, and I would not have been here without his guidance, so I'm very grateful for him for that. All right, thank you all.
My name is Casey, and I'm here with my mom and my cousin. My brother cannot be here today, but I'm thankful for him, and my sister's in college, and without her, I couldn't be here today, so I'm thankful for her, and my counselors too, and my principal, though he's new. Doing a great job.
Next up is the great principal of Sam Houston High School, Mr. Juan Villarreal. President Fowler, school board, Dr. Cavazos, thank you for this opportunity. It is a great honor to introduce to you our scholars. I certainly want to thank Ms. Dickpin, our counselors, our staff, and the administration, because we work extremely hard to ensure that our students have a great education and experience success. So I'm going to go ahead and start introducing our students. Did bring my glasses this year, because I had a hard time seeing last year, so I was a little smart today. The first one is Daphne Alvarado. Daphne is a National Hispanic Scholar who plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University and major in business administration. And some of them could not be here today, but I'm still going to read them, because I believe that they should be recognized. Ivan Camargo. Ivan is a National Hispanic Scholar who plans to attend either Texas A&amp;M, UT Austin, UTA, UNT, or SHUS, and she wants to major in political science. Brisa could not be with us. Brisa Flores is a National Hispanic Scholar who plans to attend either NYU or Baylor and major in a path that leads to medicine. Joe Hasley, Galdemas, I'm sorry. Joe Hasley is a National Hispanic Scholar who would like to apply to TCU, UT Austin, Texas A&amp;M, or Columbia. She is currently undecided on a major, but is considering business or mechanical engineering. Edgar Gonzalez could not be with us today, but he is also a Hispanic National Scholar, Recognition Scholar, who wants to attend the University of Texas at Arlington, major in engineering. Nestor Mejia Lopez. Nestor is a National Hispanic Scholar who would like to apply to MIT, UNT, Rice, TCU, Georgia Institute of Technology, and UTA. During his senior year, he would like to major in computer science. Next up is Christopher Montano. Christopher's a National Hispanic Scholar who would like to apply to Southern Methodist University, the University of North Texas at Dallas, and TCU, and he would like to major in political science. Destiny Mustilla, Mutecia, sorry, Mutecia. I said I was not going to mispronounce her name, and I kind of did, sorry, but I said it right. I'm big on making sure that I say all the names correctly, because it's important to these kids. Destiny's a National African American Recognition Scholar who plans to attend either Howard University, the University of North Texas, or Kent State University, and major in business Now, she's laughing, and she needs to be laughing. Moti, as I call her, or we call her, she helps me with announcements every single day, and so we have a great relationship, but she, that's not her real name. So today, all day, every time I would see her, I would pronounce her name, and I butchered, I really didn't say it correctly. There was a few times I said it right, so in front of all these people, I'm going to try it. And I know she's laughing, she's going to give me a hard time tomorrow. But it is just so great to have built a great relationship with her. I see her every single day, and that smile that she has, she has it every single day. She makes people's day. But back to this, she is Moti, as I call her. She is a National African American Recognition Scholar who plans to attend either the University of Houston, UTA, TCU, TWU, or UT Austin, and major in nursing. Kevin Ortega, who is not here today, he's a National Hispanic Scholar who would like to apply to UTA, UT Austin, or TCU, and major in engineering. Jasmine Padilla could not be here with us today, and she's another one that you see her with cameras, because she's part of our Texas TV and does a phenomenal job. And I was saddened that she couldn't make it today, but I do want to recognize her. Jasmine is a National Hispanic Scholar who plans to attend either the University of Texas Arlington, the University of North Texas of Dallas, and she wants to be a veterinarian. But anyway, we're really excited that she got this recognition, but sad that she could not be here. The last one that we have... The last one that we have is Mariah Parks. That's not very difficult to pronounce, so I did not mess up your name. Mariah is a National African American Scholar, who wants to attend the University of Texas at Austin, major in Studio Art. And I had a lot of other stuff, but I'm going to keep it in cadence with everyone else. So, these are our scholars. Congratulations, I'm very proud of each one of you.
Hello, my name is Mariah Parks. I am here with my mother, sister, and my nephew in the back, and I'd like to thank them for creating me. Whoa, wait. For making me who I am today, as long as, as well as my peers next to me, for building who I am as a person.
Hello, my name is Olua Busala Okonutifa, but I go by Moti, which is actually a short form of my maiden name, Moti Olua. I'm here with my mom, and I'm thankful because she always supports me, she's my biggest supporter. And I'm also thankful to all my teachers, my counselors, my friends at Sam, for their constant support to like, achieve the best that I can. I'm also like, honored to be here today, thank you for having me.
My name is Destiny. I'm here with my biggest supporter, my mom back there, and I want to thank the staff at Sam Houston, mostly the counselors, for sending us all those scholarships every day, every time. And yeah, it's just an honor to be here, so thank you.
My name is Christopher Montano, and I'm here with my mom, and I just want to say thank you, Mom. I want to give a shout out to my dad and my brothers, who couldn't make it here today, but, yeah, thank you.
My name is Nestor Mejia. I'm here with my dad and my brother, and I'd like to thank them, the staff of Arden, Sam Houston High School, and the group of avid, and yeah, pretty thankful.
My name is, my name is Josie Galdames. I'm here with my parents and my sister. I want to thank my friends for supporting me and pushing me to be the best version of myself, and I want to give a shout out to my parents for putting out, putting up with me.
Hello, my name is Ivan Camargo. I would like to give a big thanks to my avid teacher, Mr. Telamantes, who encourages me to apply to colleges and to apply to scholarships, also to my counselor, Ms. Carter, and our principal as well. And I would also like to thank my parents, my mom who's here with me right now, and my dad couldn't make it because he's at work. And then I would also like to thank my siblings, especially my sister, who is a very big part of my life, so thank you. And I would also like to thank my friends, who literally encouraged me to do my assignments, so I thank you guys for that. And also, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here.
Now, I would like to introduce our next principal, Mr. Billy Linton, who is from Seguin High School.
Good evening, President Fowler, Board, and Dr. Cavazos, thank you guys. Just sitting through that was amazing and inspiring to see the successes of all our students at Arlington ISD, so I appreciate the opportunity for you guys to, lots of celebrate our students, and praise them, and give this opportunity for recognition, so thank you. Also, I want to start with just thanking the parents. It's amazing, you know, the work that parents do to support their students. They don't get enough credit, but they've done an amazing job parenting, and so we appreciate that. And so with that, I will start off with, our first student is an 11th grader, Courtney Aiken Hen Marisi, and she is a National African American Recognition. She wants to either attend the University of Texas at Austin, the University of Houston, or Texas State University, and she wants to pursue a career in pharmacy, in the pharmacy, and majoring either Biology or Chemistry. Our next student is Karisia Armstrong. She is a National African American Recognition 12th grader. She is considering Howard, Rice, Emory, University of Chicago, or NYU. She wants to major in pre-med Biology or Neuroscience. Next up, Alexis Chuckwinery. She is a 12th grader, National African American Recognition. She is considering the University of Houston, Texas State University, the University of San Antonio, or the University of North Texas, and she plans on majoring in Public Health. Next up, 12th grader Alessandra Castilla. She is a National Hispanic Recognition student. She plans on either attending UTA or the University of Houston, and majoring in Education. Anthony Giles. Anthony Giles is a 12th grader, National African American Recognition. He is considering attending UNT, UTD, Texas A&amp;M, or UNM. He plans on majoring in either Computer Engineering and, oh, and, not either, Computer Engineering and Music Composition. Our next student up is another 11th grader, Carrington Henley. Carrington is a National African American Recognition student. She plans on attending either Texas State, University of North Texas, University of California, San Diego, San Diego State University, Texas Tech, or UT Austin, and she also plans on majoring in Biology or Pre-Dental. Our next student is senior Stephanie Jururi, and she is a National African American Recognition student. She has, her list of colleges is Duke University, Howard University, North Carolina ANT, Texas State University, University of Houston, University of Michigan, University of North Texas, University of Texas at Austin, or UTA. She plans on majoring in Nursing with a pre-med track. Next up, 12th grader Evelyn Ramirez. Evelyn Ramirez is a National Hispanic Recognition student. She plans on attending either the University of Texas at Arlington, or the University of Mary Harden Baylor, and major in Psychology. And our last student that is here is Edmund Sarfo Jimphy. Edmund is a 12th grader, National African American Recognition student. He plans on attending the University of Texas at Arlington and majoring in Engineering. Congrats.
Good afternoon, my name is Courtney Akina Marise. First, I would like to thank my parents for always pushing me to do my best. I'd like to thank my sister for coming out and supporting me tonight. I'd like to thank the Board for the opportunity. I'd like to thank my friends and my teammates for always supporting me and always pushing me to do my best as well. And finally, I'd like to thank my principal. It's his first year, and I think he's doing a great job.
My name's Karisia Armstrong. I'm here with my hardworking mother, Carlita Jones, my grandparents, my uncles, and my little sister, Kaitlin, who loves to follow me around, but I hope I can lead her into the right path. To reiterate, I do aspire to become a plastic surgeon and help those who want to feel beautiful and comfortable in their skin. And, and I'd like to thank my family for helping me feel comfortable in my skin, for always, for always loving me and loving my perfect imperfections.
Hello, everyone, good evening. My name is Alexis Chuckwinery, and I attend Seguin High School. I'm here with my amazing parents, who have sacrificed so much for me, Alexander and Confer Chuckwinery. I'm so grateful for y'all, and I will not be where I'm at without you two. And I want to thank the Board for having us tonight, it's truly an honor. And I want to thank Mr. Linton for being an amazing principal, you're doing such a good job. And I want to thank the amazing staff and faculty at Seguin High School for providing a wonderful education for us, and my mentors, Coach Howe and Ms. Monroe, for being amazing and always listening to me. And I want to thank my friends for always being there for me and putting a smile on my face. Thank you, guys.
Hi, I'm Alessandra Castilla, and I just want to thank my family and my sister for always supporting me, and for my teammates and all my friends for, you know, just making sure I can be the best I can be.
Hello, I'm Anthony Giles. I blanked out. I'd like to thank the Board for this opportunity, and I'd like to thank all of my friends, family, peers, and teachers for helping me get to where I am today. You know, I feel like everyone's giving me a little bit, even if they don't know it.
Hi, my name is Carrington Henley. I'm a junior, and I just want to say especially thank you to my mom, she's here today, and I'm a dancer. I've been dancing for like, almost 10 years, and, you know, if you don't pass, you don't play, so she's encouraged me to always stay good in school, and I think it's, you know, I think it's turning out great so far.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Stephanie. I would first like to thank the Board behind me, as well as Dr. Cavazos, who's been there since I was like, in pre-k. I'd like to thank
I would also like to thank all my peers here around us, who are part of the small group of leaders at Seguin, as we're a very small school, but we have a big impact. I'd like to thank Mr. Linton for all the leadership opportunities you've given us, and just listened to our ideas at the thousands of meetings you've had meeting in your office. I'd like to especially thank my parents, who sacrificed so much for me, my parents, my sister, and my two nieces, who I watch a lot. I would also like to thank the staff and faculty at Seguin, who has done so much for us, and as I continue this journey going into college, I would like to thank everyone here.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Evelyn Ramirez, and I'm a senior at Juan Seguin High School. I would like to thank the Board and Mr. Linton here, and I would also like to thank my parents, who are here with me, as well as my little brother and my grandma.
All right, good evening, my name is Edmund Sarfo Jimphy. I wanted to thank Mr. Linton and my counselor, Ms. Brewer, I don't think she's here today, but I want to give a big thanks to Mr. Linton for pronouncing my last name correctly. And I'm here with my mom, my grandma and her sister, Selena Orduro, Georgina Owusu and Christina Owusu. My brother couldn't be here, he's serving overseas, but I know he loves me, and he's looking over for me. I just want to thank everyone around me. It's a big, it's a big, it means a lot. Thank you.
Wow, their future is bright, and the world is in good hands. And I'm just so glad that they were all created. Aren't we glad they were created? That was so funny. Next, we will consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Cavazos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and this evening, I'd like to recommend that the Board ratify the appointments of the individuals discussed in closed session for Executive Director of Food and Nutrition Services and Principal for Cookin Educational Center.
Do we have a motion to approve the administrative ratifications as discussed?
I've got one. President Fowler, I move that we ratify the individuals, the appointment of the individuals discussed in closed session.
I have a motion by Mr. Chapa, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Mays. Please vote. Motion carries, thank you. Dr. Cavazos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and I'd like to first introduce our new Executive Director of Food and Nutrition Services, Mr. David Lewis. David attended University of Texas Southwestern Medical Center for Bachelor of Science in Clinical Dietetics. Most recently, our Director of Food and Nutrition Services has also been an Assistant Director, and you'll see all that on the screen there, Assistant Director of Food and Nutrition Services, Operations Coordinator, has been a Director of Nutrition Services in Dallas, has been a consultant, has been an instructor, I won't read all that, but you can see it, a clinical dietitian at Parkland Health and Hospital Systems, and an owner and a founder of Cart Smart in Arlington. David, congratulations for this leadership appointment. We wish you the very best, I know you'll be successful. Next, our Principal at Cookin Education Center, Elizabeth Uvman. Elizabeth attended the University of Texas at Arlington for Bachelor of Arts in Psychology, Lamar University for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership. Most recently, was our Associate Principal at Cookin Education Center in Community-Based Pre-K, has been an Academic Dean at South Davis Elementary, an Instructional Coach at South Davis, an Instructional Coach at Thornton, a bilingual teacher at Cookin, a bilingual pre-k teacher at Rourke, and a Child Life Assistant at Children's Medical Center. Elizabeth, congratulations on this appointment.
Next on our agenda are action items. Dr. Cavazos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and I'd like the Board to consider the termination and non-renewal of the term contract of Nikitra Hamilton.
We got it. It's good, we're good. Thank you, President Fowler. I move to accept the Superintendent's recommendation and to propose termination and non-renewal of Nikitra Hamilton's term contract, and further move that the record of this action reflect the following. Before voting on this motion, the Board considered a draft of the letter to Ms. Hamilton proposing the non-renewal of employment. The Superintendent reviewed with the Board the reason or reasons for making his recommendation regarding the employee, and the Board considered the reason or reasons and any other information provided by the Superintendent, and that by the passage of this motion, the Board directs the Superintendent to prepare for the Board's President's signature, a final notice of proposed contract non-renewal for Nikitra Hamilton, and ensure that the notice is delivered not later than 30 days from the date of this motion. Directs that the notice of proposed contract non-renewal include the time limitations and procedure for requesting a hearing. Directs the Superintendent to notify Eichelbaum-Mordell of this action, and request that the Office arrange for representation of all appropriate parties. Authorizes Eichelbaum-Mordell to consult with the Superintendent to approve the final notice of proposed contract non-renewal, and to take whatever actions are necessary and proper to present the case in support of the proposed non-renewal. And directs that a copy of this motion be attached to the minutes of this meeting, and the final notice of proposed non-renewal and termination of employment sent to Nikitra Hamilton.
Thank you, Dr. Raish. I have a motion from Dr. Raish. Do I have a second? I have a second from Mr. Will Banks. Please vote. Motion carries in the affirmative. Thank you. Next on our agenda are discussion action items. Dr. Cavazos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and this evening, we bring for board consideration policy updates and some local policy revisions that we're recommending. We have discussed this in detail with the Governance Committee, and this evening, we bring it for discussion and possible action if the board deems appropriate. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Hill, who will take us through the policies that we're considering tonight. Dr. Hill?
Thank you. Good evening, President Fowler, board members, and Dr. Cavazos. Again, we're here to give a brief overview of Update 120 and five additional local policies that administration brings for your consideration. Just a little background, Update 120 encompasses legal and local policy recommendations from the Texas Association of School Boards. The administration, again, brings five additional policies for your consideration for adoption or further discussion if necessary. Just a reminder, the legal updates are changes in the law. They're legal policies that do not need to be adopted, just only reviewed by administration and the board, and we've done that. The local policies do need board action to adopt, revise, or repeal the policy. In Update 120, there are 100, I'm sorry, in Update 120, there are 30 policies, 26 legal and four local policies. The administration also brings DEC, DGBA, EIC, FFH, and FNG, all local policies. The process that we've gone through at this point to review the policies are appropriate staff, including the Board Governance Committee. We've met, we've met with general counsel, we've had lots of discussion with Tasby on some of our recommendations, and so, and administration has looked at, each division has looked at how these policies will impact their divisions. Just a closer look at some of the policies, as you know, you can't see this, but you have this in your packet, this is the list of policies in the way that Tasby sends them to us, and just a little bit closer look at some of those policies. BBD Legal dealing with board member training, and I think you all are aware of this, but it's now a policy that board members are required to attend school safety training. One on special programs requiring accelerated instruction and accelerated learning committees for students who fail to perform satisfactory on some certain assessments. This arrived from House Bill 4545. A lot of this is already in place in the district, but it's just now being recommended to be added to policy. Clarification regarding investigations of abuse or neglect in a school setting is another legal policy change. Local policy changes include, including the school safety plan requires that the district's emergency management plan address train derailments near schools that are within 1,000 yards of a school, and that's, again, already in our emergency operations plan. Addresses, FFI addresses bullying and how those prevention and mediation tactics must be included within the standards that are going to be released by TEA, and once they are released, we'll definitely lay that over what we currently do and make sure that we're in alignment with it. Student Rights and Responsibilities clarifies how special education complaints are addressed, and then with Student Discipline clarifies certain circumstances when a restraint may be used, and the restraint of a child who's receiving special education services. In DEC, Local Comp and Leave extends coverage from the sick leave bank to immediate family members. This is a local policy that we're bringing for consideration. DGBA with complaints and grievances requires that documents that are going to be submitted during a grievance that they be submitted when the grievance is first filed. With Academic Achievement, we're clarifying the calculation of PTAC programs, which are new programs at Bowie, Lamar, Sam Houston, and Seguin High Schools, to be included in the class rank for calculations at those schools. And FFH clarify, for clarity, removes examples from the policy for more clarification in our implementation of the policy. So as, again, stated earlier, we, the administration recommends the board approve the policies in Update 120, as well as the additional five that we bring forward for consideration, and we'll be glad to have any more discussions at this point for questions.
Do I have any trustees with questions or comments? Mr. Will Banks?
I've got a motion I'd like to make, but I believe Mr. Raish has a question first. I'd like to yield to him.
Sure. Dr. Raish?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you very much for the presentation, Mr. Hill. I, I think the revisions and adjustments on these policies are, are just fine. I do have special interest in policy DEC Local, and I, I would like to ask Mr. Cale, perhaps, to come down and provide some more information about the policy.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for coming down, Mr. Cale. I don't mean to put you on the spot. I, I'm excited about this policy. I think it's a great thing, but I'd like to have you explain it a little bit more, and how it came about, and the details of it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Raish. Good evening, President Fowler, Dr. Cavazos, members of the board. I welcome the opportunity to talk about it. I think this is a great change for our employees. The sick leave bank has existed for some time, and it benefits our employees who have effectively found themselves in extremely difficult situations, where they have exhausted their accrued leave, and yet, they're in a situation where there, the nature of their illness or injury is potentially life-threatening or requiring extended hospitalization, but effectively, it's very serious. And when you're in a situation like that, and you've also exhausted your sick leave balance from a pay perspective, it's kind of a double impact to our staff in those unusual but very difficult situations. And so, what we're doing is we're taking a sick leave bank policy that already offered relief. It's completely voluntary for an employee to participate in. You can enroll in it through the standard open enrollment process each summer, and it goes into effect September 1st typically. But historically, it had covered just the employee's particular illness or significant injury. And going forward, the adjustment that we've recommended, and I'm hopeful it'll be approved here in just a moment, is that we're also adding dependent care for spouse, as well as for a dependent child, or coverage for spouse as well as a dependent child, excuse me. And in doing so, the employee would have the option to either participate, as they have in the past, just for themselves, with contribution of three days of their leave accrual to the bank, or they can actually contribute an additional three days that would allow that coverage for their spouse or their dependent. Same type of scenario in terms of eligibility and coverage. You've exhausted your particular leave balance, so you're in that kind of situation, and a physician has certified the severity of the situation, but having taken the initiative on an individual basis to cover yourself, and, and those situations coming up, now you have a backstop that just wasn't there before. We know we've had those situations that have come up in the past. The bank had not been put together that way, and so unfortunately, they were not able to be covered at that time, but I'm looking forward to a status where that's just not the case anymore, that someone who wants to have that kind of coverage can, and those scenarios where it's really important, they have the ability to continue to receive pay.
Thank you for that summary. Yeah, I don't think there's going to be any issue with having this be approved in a few minutes. I guess I have a couple of questions, and first off, I'd like to say that I believe that there will be a lot of participation in this. This is a district that is filled with love and care for one another. That's something I have certainly experienced over my tenure. So I'm, I'm happy that it will be something that will be filled, trying to think of the right word there, but it will, the intent will be met, I would see. One clarifying question. You mentioned one time spouse and dependent child, and then another time dependent. Would this go as far as, I don't know if it's listed in policy, if it would be regulation, to a dependent period, because a dependent might not be a child?
So this, we're trying to, for the sake of simplicity and consistency, use similar definitions to what TRS Active Care uses for those definitions.
Oh, okay.
It just helps the ease of the administration process, but effectively, we're talking about a spouse and a, what we constitute a dependent child. Typically, the dependent child is living with the employee, and the employee contributes at least 50% of the child's support system. So maybe not in all cases, but probably in most, living in the same household. Our objective, my objective in administration of this, is to use good judgment as it applies. There are going to be extenuating circumstances, there's going to be a transition period. We've got the backstop of the TRS definitions that we can use for clarity and consistency, but it's also to apply good judgment as we wade into this revision of the policy.
That's great. I appreciate that, and I know that this policy essentially directs superintendent or designee to create the procedural regulation. I would request that we get a copy of that, an advanced copy of what that looks like, just because it's, it's not our purview, but I'd like to just take a look at it.
Mr. Cale, you may want to mention the open enrollment period? When this actually takes effect, right?
Yes, sir.
You may have already mentioned it.
No, you're right. So in our, in our summer open enrollment period for all benefits, which are typically effective on 9/1, September 1st, this would, with the approval of the policy revision tonight by the board, this would be included in that open enrollment process. I was actually reading the draft of the guidelines you're talking about in the back on my laptop, so we're hopefully a little bit ahead of the game for the superintendent's consideration, and then I, you know, the distribution for further review, but I think we have done a lot of the legwork to be ready, so that we can be on time with this year's open enrollment process. It would not be effective until 9/1, and there's also, and it's in the regulations, a limited waiting period at the point you enroll until it's effective. Those kinds of things are built in. I think it's 60 days for things like, just, I have this issue and I'm covered tomorrow and so forth, but those are all covered in the regulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all the information.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cale, thank you for this policy, specifically DEC Local change, and the clarifying remarks and questions from my colleague, Mr. Raish. This is a great thing for our district, and I want to thank the Board Governance Committee for looking into this. I think when we all, this was brought to our attention back in the summer from an employee who had received devastating news about her spouse, and knew that there was a gap, especially when compared to other districts around us, not all, but several districts. We, as a board, felt that this is something that definitely needed to be addressed, because we care about our employees, and several of us have had to deal with family members with catastrophic illnesses, and it takes a lot of time.
It does.
And I understand, you know, some employees would have liked this to kind of happen sooner, but we, we all understand the need for this to happen in the open enrollment period. But again, this is a huge step forward for our employees, and sends a loud message that we really care about them and their families. So thank you, and with that, I'd like to move approval of local... Afterwards. I move to approve local policies, including, included in Update 120, and local policies DEC, DGBA, EIC, and FNG as presented. Oh, I'm sorry, and FFH. Thank you.
I have a motion from Mr. Will Banks. Do I have a second?
Thank you, President Fowler. I second the motion by Mr. Will Banks, and I just want to appreciate the kind of words that Mr. Will Banks had for the Governance Committee's consideration of these policies, but I also want to give credit where credit is due, and that Mr. Will Banks was a champion of the policies that were just discussed by Dr. Raish and Mr. Will Banks, and bringing those to our attention is something that the board needed to consider to bring us in line with some other districts, but also because it's the right thing to do. And so I appreciate Mr. Will Banks's attention to this and his persistence as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. So I have a motion from Mr. Will Banks, and a second by Mr. Chapa. Any discussion? Please vote. Thank you. Motion carries in the affirmative. We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda items? We have a motion from Ms. McMurrell. Do I have a second?
Second, Kisha.
Have a, have a second from Ms. Mays. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you. We will now move to our discussion item number one. Dr. Cavazos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and this evening, we bring as a discussion, as we typically do, the House Bill 3 and District Improvement Plan Progress Monitoring Update. And so tonight, you'll have a presentation related to the performance thus far in some of our screeners and other data, and so I'll turn it over to Dr. Lopez. For her presentation.
President Fowler, members of the board, and Dr. Cavazos, thank you for your time this evening. I'm sharing out the House Bill 3, a small portion of the House Bill 3 update, but also the MOY screener results. So our screeners have the ability to identify a student's readiness for on-grade level instruction, and should be used to inform a teacher's next steps in teaching, as well as determining where a student needs to be placed for their small group instruction, and what specific concepts to spiral in and reteach and reinforce with, based on student need. The screeners that we utilize include Circle for both reading and math for our pre-k4 students, M-Class for our K-6 for reading, IStation ISIP, 7th and 8th grade reading, and then NWEA MAP for Kinder through Algebra 1 for math. So the House Bill 3 goal portion is related to our pre-k4-year-old literacy and numeracy goals. So for pre-k4, we were aiming for end of the year to end of the year, increase the percentage of pre-k4 students who are on track from 64% to 68%. And based on the MOY results, we are at 64% for on-track, up from 41% from the beginning of the year. That large jump from beginning of the year to middle of the year is, it's expected. They come in with very, very little of the basics, and then they do a great job of growing them with those foundational skills, and so, looking towards going to 68% and meeting our end-of-the-year goal. And since this is one of our House Bill 3 pieces, we break it down by the student group, so you can see that the 64% is for the all-student group, but then it's broken out by the different subgroups as well. Large growth across, across all the student groups from BOY to MOY. Now moving into the literacy screeners, that we, we don't set goals end of year to end of year for these yet, and so, M-Class is what we use for Kinder through 6. That is both M-Class English and M-Class Lectura, and then IStation, 7th through 8th grade. So as I stated, we've combined the results this year for English and Spanish, because we don't, they're not in an R&amp;D phase for the Lectura assessment, and, and so the categories are set in the same as they are for English, so that's well below benchmark, is... are set in the same as they are for English. So that's well below benchmark is red, below benchmark, yellow, at benchmark is green, and then our above benchmark is, is blue. And those are vendor-provided color-coded categories. But some impacts to the score interpretation are fidelity of administration procedures. So maintaining focused classrooms, the window is January 4th through the 20th, so coming right back from the holiday break. And so having the appropriate assessment environment might be an issue. Utilizing required administration supplies, some coding or scoring issues perhaps with long-term subs that are not as familiar with inputting student scores for the, for the M-Class assessment. So just some things there that might have been impacting the, the middle-of-year results. And then a variance in student engagement across grade levels, campuses and classrooms, particularly at our junior high level. So you will see that, not for M-Class, of course, this is K through 6. But this, the potential impact to the scoring interpretation is both for M-Class and iStation. So I'm going to go through the results by grade. And so that, the color-coded category there is on the pie chart. So what you can see, I'm not going to read out each one of these. I'm just going to give a general, one value for the at and the above. So the green and the blue on each slide. So kindergarten, we have 52% of our students that are at or above benchmark. For Kinder, the phonemic fluency and then decoding seemed to be an issue. However, of the 48% that are below benchmark, the students, we have about 30% of those that are either above average, excuse me, average above average or well above average on their growth from BOY to MOY. So hoping they'll move out of, well, anticipating based on the vendor that they will move into the at-benchmark category. For first grade, we have 47% that are at or above benchmark. And decoding was also, also an issue for first grade as well as their nonsense, non-nonsense word fluency. Second grade, we have 48% of our students at benchmark or above. They mirror first grade where it was their, the nonsense word fluency, decoding, but then also reading comprehension was a sub-assessment where there seemed to be a struggle. For third grade, we're at 45% at or above. Third grade mirrored second grade in the areas where they were struggling. For fourth grade, 53% at or above benchmark. And fourth grade on, it's the, the main sub-assessment there, where there was struggle was reading comprehension. For our fifth graders, 42% at or above benchmark. And then for sixth grade, 42% at or above benchmark. This slide shows the comparison of the percentage of our testers that are at or above that benchmark performance level from, the growth from BOY to MOY. So you can see our kindergartners are up 4%, first grade is up 3%, second is up 4, and fourth grade is also up 4. Third, fifth, and sixth had no change in the percentage by the categories. So that's not tracking specific students. Students could have moved up or down. So just the aggregate values, there was no change in third, fifth, or sixth. Now, moving into iStation for 7th and 8th grade, that also has a categorization provided by the vendor. And we've put the color coding there. And so level 1 is at or below 20th percentile, level 2 is the 20th to 40th, level 3, 40th to 60th, level 4 is 60th to 80th, and then level 5 is above the 80th percentile. And for our 7th grade results, we have a large percentage in the yellow and the red, unfortunately, for our 7th grade class. And then also for our 8th grade class. And this shows the change in the levels by grade level for, from BOY to MOY. Not ideal because there's been growth in the level 1 category from BOY to MOY. And not as much growth in level 5, which is where you would want the growth to be, level 4 and level 5. And there is feedback concerning the seriousness with which the test is taken by our junior high students. These values don't correspond to what we see on our curriculum assessments in a meaningful way. So it's reporting out, although not confident about the accuracy of the data as a reflection of what the students actually know and their ability to read. I'll move into early numeracy. And so again, pre-K4, we set a goal, and that was to increase the percentage of our pre-K students on track from 84 to 86%. That math composite is already provided by the vendor. And we, we moved up 1% from BOY to MOY from 83 to 84. It was already very high at the beginning of the year in, in our, our math composite score. And so looking forward to getting to that 86% for our end-of-year assessment. And this is the performance broken down by subgroup. Now, moving into Kinder through Algebra 1. This is the consistent screener. So this is our NWA MAP. And the MAP uses a RIT score and also has the vendor-provided color-coded categories of low, low average, average, high average, and then high, based on percentiles. We don't, we have it. We don't report that out to you. Instead, we, we use their STAR projection. And so if you'll recall, that was the did-not-means approaches meets and masters categories. The vendor provides the projections starting in second grade. So while it's not in the data file, they do give the categories. So we are able to internally create the same performance level categories for Kinder and first with guidance from the vendor. Impacts of the STAR redesign could certainly make me concerned about the projections. I think, I think everything is being interpreted with caution this year because we just don't quite know how, how everything's going to tie into the STAR redesign. So anyhow, interpret results with caution. So we'll start with our kindergarten class. And for our kindergarten class, we have 72% that our approaches are better. For our first grade, 58% that our approaches are, are better. For second grade, dropped to 48% at approaches are better. For our third grade class, 54% at approaches are better. Fourth grade, 57%. Fifth grade, we're at 61% at approaches are better. Sixth grade, 63%. Seventh grade, 64%. And our eighth grade is 62%. For our Kinder to first grade, the, the main issue where we were seeing the lower portion of the sub-assessments was in geometry and measurement, also data analysis and money. That geometry and measurement, though, persisted throughout. So for our second to fifth grade band, that was like the lowest concept that, so just indicating an area where there needs to be intervention and reteach. And, and then once we moved into the algebra, which I'm about to show you, it's solving, writing and solving linear functions and equations. So, which is a big bulk of the curriculum for Algebra 1. Before I move into Algebra 1 and show the change from the BOY to MOY on STAR projections, so you can see that there's an increase at the lower levels. Kinder through 4th, they all have an increase with the exception of second grade, and then a dip in fifth through 8th grade. Now, for Algebra 1, they, they don't provide the STAR projection. They do that only from BOY to EOI. So there is no middle-of-year projection. So for that, instead, I'm going to report out the color-coded categories provided by the vendor that are those percentile chunks. So, so you can see here, the red, the 35%, that's the level 1, low, 22%, low average, 17% average, 13, high average, and then 13% high. And that is all we have as far as the results go. I will wait for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. Dr. Lopez, I really appreciate the detailed presentation. My, my questions, I, I don't want them to come across as, as, they're not, they're certainly not hostile. They're just questions I have as, as a board member. But the first question, it's not really a question, but the first statement I have is, we have been, for many meetings now, receiving very nuanced, granular presentations on student achievement vis-à-vis mid-year metrics versus curriculum assessments and so on and so forth. And most of them indicate that we are recovering from the pandemic even faster than our five-year projections would, were set, right? I mean, first of all, do you agree with that statement that we're in many areas recovering faster than we had maybe anticipated when we came with the five-year plan?
Certainly. Year, year one, we exceeded every goal that we set for our STAR performance.
Okay. The, the concern I have, or it's really sort of a question I think I have for you or the administration, is just from a statistical standpoint, is we receive as a board these very granular, nuanced presentations week after, or meeting after meeting. And they are, by and large, really similar. And there's a lot of noise in there. So as a board member from the governance level, the 50,000-fit view that we sit on, what is the takeaway? What are the trends that you see in the data that we have been presented with over several meetings that, as a board member, we should be cognizant of?
There's room to grow. I mean, that's, we, we discussed our STAR results, and we talked about how last year, what is it, 72 of our 75 campuses have 2A as their academic growth P says, what they took for their 70% in their data calculation. And, and while we did experience a large growth, there, there still is absolutely room to grow, and there are still gaps to fill. Now, instructionally, I certainly am not a curricular expert that could speak to the appropriate interventions for the various subjects in order to get to there. But of course, I mean, we have, we have a department that does that. So, but as I look at the results, curriculum assessment or, now, our screeners, our screeners don't show, or maybe slightly more concerning. However, there's not exactly studies and research on the correlation between the screener performance and then the STAR performance.
Right.
And certainly can, I certainly can explore that this year with the redesign.
Because among other things, the students know that they generally don't count and they're not the real deal, right?
That, yes, there are these other variables that are impacting performance. Additionally, we have, it's not, and it's not just student engagement or their attitude toward an assessment. When, when you do have a teacher shortage and there are long-term subs that aren't as familiar with these platforms and, and how to administer the assessments, that could also be impacting, impacting the results and...
But you're not saying that the curriculum assessments and the mid-year assessments that they were doing don't have any correlative value with the STAR results, are you?
No, certainly. Our curriculum assessments have, we, we've done studies on curriculum, our curriculum assessment performance of our students and the STAR projection, or, excuse me, and STAR performance. And we have high correlation from what we, what we use in our equating process to how they actually perform. Now, with screeners, we, M-Class was new last year for our English students. Spanish was in R&amp;D, so that, we haven't done the analysis on the screeners. MAP is also new this year. So I just can't speak to the screeners and their relationship to STAR like I can for the, our internal assessments that we've created, that we've actually done analysis on.
Okay. No, and that's fair. I, I think the thing that I'm concerned about as a board member is, is, is meeting after meeting, we get these granular numbers and there's, you know, so many hundred kids in this grade level that we assessed or took the thing and we're looking at this. And they're generally the same from, from meeting to meeting. What, I mean, what, I, like, obviously, we are concerned with student achievement. That is our, one of our highest priorities. But what are we to take from what we have seen through August to February of this school year? What are we supposed to take from these numbers and these presentations that we're getting, meeting after meeting? What is, what is the goal for presenting this granular level of data to a board? And that might not be a question for you, and I see Dr. Works rising to the occasion.
Yes, absolutely.
Sorry. I just, I'm like, this is a great question. I'm actually really glad you asked it.
Okay.
So I think the important thing about this data is recognizing the purpose of the data or like what the purpose of these assessments are and what the role of the board is, right?
Yeah.
So you're, the essence of the questions I'm interpreting is, you're in a governance role. What am I supposed to do with these things?
Right. And I'm not saying like student achievement data, period, but I'm just saying like, the level of granularity with which we are receiving this data, meeting after meeting.
Right.
I find it very fascinating. But I also realize I, from meeting to meeting, the data looks kind of similar across lots of different metrics. And so I'm wondering what I'm supposed to do with it.
So there's two challenges, and we can take whatever direction from the board that's helpful to you. The problem is, is that as, as a school board, you're, you set targets for an annual target, and our charge is to provide you with information along the way to see how we're inching towards that target. The problem is, is that the assessments that we use in grades, like primary grades, or like screeners is a perfect example, is not designed, these, these assessments are not designed to provide you with that projection. These assessments are designed for teachers in their classroom. So one of the challenges that we even experience at the district level, and Dr. Lopez gave you some highlights that we kind of look for, we can look for large trends across the system and say, okay, we know the phonemic awareness, or we know that geometry and measurements struggle across the system. But it doesn't necessarily mean there's actually a problem with the curriculum. Sometimes it really is about small group intervention and, and reactions in the classroom to the data when they receive it, especially screener data because it's so individualized. And so that's the challenge, is we're providing information to you based upon groups of students that the board has established targets around, but which we don't actually measure in a, in a summative way. We don't measure second graders in a summative way like we do third grade on up in, when it comes to like STAR. The best summative we could possibly provide, if you would even call it one, is an end-of-year assessment on a screener. But even that, in my mind, is not really summative in nature. It's really designed to tell you how kids progress throughout the year, and they're now at the end. So to answer your question, what, what are you supposed to do with it as a board member? Honestly, I would suggest that really it's more about us just providing you with the trend so you can see, are we doing what Dr. Lopez described as? Are we inching towards the goal or are we regressing? And if we're regressing, do we have any indication on the system, at the system level about what that may be and what the cause may be? Or is it more of, it's just part of the process of learning? Sometimes you're, you'll see, and especially in screener data, you'll see this kind of going on. And there are, there's a plethora of reasons of why that's the case. Some of it's literally like what she's talking about, is the students taking it seriously or not. But in terms of what you do with the data, we're only providing it because it's, it is the only data point we have in primary grades, for example, that you could look to compare it towards an outcome goal. But it's not actionable at the system level. These, these data points are actionable at the classroom level. So...
So, but it's accurate to say that, that the trend that we have seen across these many presentations is a positive one that we're recovering quickly from the pandemic?
Yeah, like, we're on track towards goals. And depending upon which assessment, whether it's a CA or whether it's the, the release from the state, we see a little bit of this kind of happening. But that's very typical. The, the assessments that we pay attention to in terms of predictive value towards a STAR outcome is what Dr. Lopez indicated, which are our CAs. It's really difficult, for example, to look at a MAP score, a RIT score, and look at their prediction for a STAR outcome because frankly, as she mentioned, we're in the middle of a STAR redesign, and that has not been taken into consideration with MAP because they haven't seen it yet. Next year, it might be stronger. And then what we would do is look, well, what do these comparisons look like compared Uh, and then what we would do is look, well, what do these comparisons look like compared to our CAs? And do we see a relationship there? It's just way too early for us to do that. So, we're kind of in this weird spot when it comes to assessment because the state's redesigning the assessment and they're redesigning the accountability calculation at the same time and we're just trying to like navigate it.
Yeah, and I get that. I mean, the, the, the total, I mean, it's not, we, I think Dr. Boss has said many times, it's not, they're not tinkering.
It's not ideal, right now.
They're re-envisioning it and I get that. But that, that was just my question because it is, it's sort of a data dump, uh, from my perspective, uh, meeting to meeting. And, and so I definitely see the positive trend and I, and I get that. I just was wondering if there was something else I was supposed to glean from it other than there was, there's a generally positive trend.
That's the, the essence of it. It's really, we're trying to provide you with information so that as a board you can see whether we're trending in the right spots or not. We can make those, um, assessments at the end of the presentations helpful, like larger overarching ideas like these, we actually are trending in the positive direction. But if there are, like I said, if there are adjustments to the information that you want, we're happy to do it.
Sure, and, and I appreciate that and it, it's a bit of an odd question, I realize.
No, it's fair.
Because you, you don't set the agendas. Let me ask you a hypothetical question real quick and maybe Dr. Ross.
I was just going to add something because I think we're, we've answered a lot of the question, but we haven't answered all the question. The, the, the big answer to the question is it's a mandate by the state and it, it's actually affecting local control. So the, this presentation HB3 requires that you get this data. And so there's that, right? And I think the board at some point also wanted further data, including screener data. That's not a requirement necessarily from, from HB3, which is fine because I think those data points are important. Uh, I do think though that, um, that you've answered it, the general trend is it's, it's positive in looking at the system as it exists. The issue, and we've all discussed it, is that the system is changing and we don't know what it's changing to. We have a lot of guesses and a lot of this and it might be this and it's probably going to be this. So it really puts the district, not only our district, but all districts, in a very difficult situation because we're reporting, the CA for example, the screener, set aside for a minute. We're reporting how we think it's going to be and how, and schools are receiving that information, but the system is changing. And the test has changed. And none of it has been decided yet in terms of the accountability system. It's just been, this is the framework. And, and it'll have major, major impact on the results. And, and that's just the bottom line. So, it, it is that transition year, which is why we continue to emphasize that in a transition year with the test, the accountability system, and I'll add one even though it's, it falls, because it was mentioned today in, in our call, that it's all online. Now, a vast majority of our students have been taking tests online, okay? But I'm not sure that's the same thing for the state of Texas. So a different test or change test, a whole, a new accountability system because it's not a, a refresh. And everybody takes it online this year. Those three things are happening at the end of the year. It leads to a lot of what you're describing, which is, boy, what is this going to look like when we actually implement those three things? So, I just wanted to add that a lot of this is a requirement by the state. That, that's probably the, the easier answer at this point.
Yeah, and that, and that's good to know. And it, it again would be an example of the state trying to do something that is not beneficial or helpful for us at all. I mean, because i- unless there is a direction on what we can do at a systems level to assist or to course correct or something like that, it's not, it's just a lot of noise, in my opinion. But I will, I will not burden you with my hypothetical question. Which was going to be, what should we do at a systems level if, if these, these things were not trending the way that we would like them to? But it's thank, you know, blissfully not a hypothetical that we're presented with. So I will, I will step back for the moment and, uh, and leave the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Ms. McMorra?
Thank you, President Fowler. And in my, my questions, I don't know, it might be a combo. But I do appreciate both y'all of being, uh, being able to speak to this. And I, I appreciate Dr. Lopez, the presentation of the data. I think I mentioned this before, when, actually when we had beginning of year M-class data. I have, um, as a parent, the reports are very easy to understand. And I've also heard a laws of, a lot of positive feedback from our elementary level teachers about the M-class assessment. Not just the ease of administration, but also the data that it captures. And my question was going to be, you know, I, I'll be really kind of plain in, in how I say this. I am concerned that we have too many students reading below grade level. In the K through through, K through three, um, K through three grade levels. Can you, i- is that a trend you guys are noticing? Can y'all speak to, and you know, you mentioned that this data, it's useful at the classroom level. And we know that our teachers are, are doing everything they can and they're analyzing their data. They're implementing intervention lessons. But at some point, you know, I would hope that with data like this, it should be actionable at the district-wide level. So I'm just curious to know what efforts are being made.
So our focus this year completely, and we've talked about this, is around specific strategies that are connected to the areas of deficiency in the screener data connected to these lower grade levels. Phonemic awareness, um, reading comprehension, vocabulary development for the upper grades. There are strategies that are in our comprehensive literacy plan that we specifically highlighted this year. Were selected because there's a relationship between those strategies and kids improvement or when those are implemented in the classroom. So we have a couple of things that we're doing. We have, you know, the, the specific, um, five areas that we've talked about from the, the comprehensive literacy plan that the teachers have been trained in, they're receiving coaching around those things. And then the principals are monitoring and supporting that implementation in the classroom. And then we also have other resources that teachers can leverage outside of just teaching, um, in small group instruction that differentiates for students. For example, uh, you know, there's, there's Amplify products that we have available. We have, um, and I mentioned earlier, the Imagine Math that's available for mathematics to help, um, with students in their individualization of terms of like which, uh, strategies or which skills they need to build on. So those, those are in place too. It's just going to take time. You know, we have a, we, we have a population of students that over time have typically struggled in the beginning years when they're, with their reading and it progresses and gets better over time. I do think there are some strategies that were put in place at the system level, I think will help with that. Full day pre-K, having a group of students a whole year in advance sets them up for better kindergarten readiness, which actually makes reading better in their first and second grade years. We're going to see those fruits start to yield themselves over time. But it is a challenge and the areas that you see highlighted tonight, um, are typically the ones we've seen cohort after cohort, um, in with our students, to be honest.
Thank you. And, uh, my other question, um, switching gears a little bit, is in regards to ICE Station at the junior high level.
Yes.
So, another, another really plain question. This is not the first time that, um, you guys have shared that motivation is an issue when our seventh and eighth graders take the ICE Station assessment. So, with that being said, um, you know, is this screener something that staff is looking at, reconsidering? Because ICE Station, it, it doesn't just cost district funds, it costs instructional minutes. So I'm really curious what we're looking at at this point in time.
There is no plan to change it at this time, the screener. We have to select from a commissioner's list. There's only four screeners on that list and ICE Station's one of them. If we were to alter the screener, I'm not confident that it's actually going to be any better in terms of outcomes. The challenge around motivation has less to do with the screener, in my opinion, and more to do with students' awareness at that age about what's the point of this? Like, what's it actually going to do for me? We have never administered a screener at the eighth grade level until now. We've only done it at the seventh grade level and we did it with students who failed the previous year because that's where the commissioner's requirement is. Um, and so it's always been a requirement of seventh grade. There is no statute that it has to happen at eighth grade, but you don't have a different screener in seventh and eighth because then you have no continuity of data. So I think the challenge really is around us visiting with campuses and teachers about how to establish a meaningful testing environment when this is actually occurring. The challenge around ICE Station, and I know you know ICE Station, is that it automatically assesses students on a monthly basis the first time they log into it. It is, if I'm a student, I'm going to be taking, um, and I'm assigned to work on, on ICE Station by the teacher and during my time in the classroom or at home. The first time I log into it in the month, it's going to automatically assess where I'm, where, how I'm doing. Um, and then we, of course, have our, our three touchpoints during the course of the year. The reality is, and you know, I have one, um, teenagers are smart and they know that it's not going to be, it packed their grade and it's not predictive of, it's not going to impact their STAR exam. So it, there is, there has to be a, a different way to kind of get to them and a lot of it has to do with just creating a, an environment where an assessment is happening meaningfully. And we've talked, um, I, I know recently, like, my office and the Office of School Leadership, we talked about how can we kind of cultivate those kinds of things better? Because it, the, the pinch point really is junior high when it comes to this specific screener.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that, those are my only questions.
I don't think that answers your question, but.
Yes, I know what you did. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. McMorra.
President Fowler.
Dr. Raj?
Thank you, thank you. I, I just wanted to dovetail on to there. So in, in the realm of, uh, academic superintendent's, chief academic officers, uh, around the state, is this, has this been a topic of discussion? As, as specific to the seventh and eighth grade and incenting or we can't get the results that we're hoping for?
No, I, I, I haven't had this specific conversation personally with other counterparts, um, around seventh and eighth grade specifically. I've, I've experienced it myself personally in three different systems and it's consistent in every system I've worked in. Most systems, um, well, not all systems even assess junior high completely. And when they do, sometimes what people will do, and I know a school system that does this where they'll use the required assessment on the commissioner's list and then they'll have another assessment they do on top of it.
Right.
That's always been a real challenge in our system because, um, teachers are very apprehensive of giving up more instructional time. Um, but I know a neighboring district who literally will do M-class even with their primary grades and then MAP on the side. So it just, and then their teachers are also doing, um, you know, another assessment they do like face-to-face with kids. So it just, it's trying to find that sweet spot, but the short answer to your question is I haven't dug in deeply with other counterparts around how their junior high students tend to be motivated in, 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 in taking the screener.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious. It seems like that could be like a, a PLC type of thing.
I, I have a meeting that will come up in the next six weeks. I can put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, and, and if collectively you, you guys can, can crack the nut of how to empower and incentivize the seventh and eighth graders? I think there's going to be a lot of teachers that'd be really interested.
Yeah, I think there's like the, um, like I mentioned, there's the login, uh, monthly, but there's probably some effect that we can have around the three touchpoints over the course of the year. We can just.
There, there is a, uh, has been a PLC about too much testing.
Sure.
That one has existed for a long time, right? And, and this is because our CA results, this, and we had this discussion, just to be transparent here, uh, when Natalie presented to, to me and to senior staff, we had previous CA results and they show progress and improvement and all this kind of thing. And then you see a screener. And, and so you know that it's not doing what it's supposed to because the CA is. So there is a motivation and then focus on the CA, which is good at all levels, uh, and we want to preserve that. And we know that competing with that is screener after screener and this type of thing. So to, to Dr. Worth's point, we have to find that balance. And, um, and so with the change in CCMR at the high school, predicted change by the commissioner and TEA, that emphasis on testing at the high school is going to continue to increase and, and, and we feel it's going to, again, do more testing of students over and over and over. And, uh, so there has been a PLC about that, but that's not what you were asking, I know. I just thought it.
Well, no, it's a, I, I appreciate the input. It's a valid, uh, a valid point and, uh, it, it really puts us as a district and other districts between a rock and a hard place because we've got, in our district, I'm obviously biased, but we have a very methodical, scientific approach, uh, research-based approach to try to drive that achievement and that change. Others maybe don't have, have the same. But then we have, and maybe some do, I, I shouldn't bash districts out there. But then we also have, uh, the, the need to prioritize. And we have HB3-specific requirements and we have state law requirements. And they, instead of all being in alignment, they're all like this. And I, I mean, we're at a legislative session now. I've never seen a legislative session where we can get the legislators to understand this lack of intersection and cohesion of what should be. And I guess I'm just venting. I don't know how we get there, but it sure would be nice to be able to, uh, come up with something so that we can, we can educate our legislators and maybe move the needle with TEA, but I don't know about that. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler and Dr. Raj. I feel your laments and I appreciate the co- comments from my other colleagues too on this topic. Talking particularly about the apathy that we've talked about at the higher grades and why it, um, decreases the accuracy maybe of the screener data at the junior high and high school levels. I was talking to an administrator today at one of our high schools who laments the fact that they weren't properly trained on MAP, uh, for Algebra I because it does a pretty good job, from what I understand, of preventing that kind of apathy from skewing the results because it keeps asking them questions until they get 50% right. So it accurately assesses, more accurately assesses what level that student is actually at in Algebra I on, on those topics. Am I right?
Yeah, it, it, it's designed to hone in on where your written score would have planned.
Whereas ICE Station, my son, who loathed ICE Station and would just click through.
Which we can tell, by the way.
Which you can, yeah, everyone, here we get in trouble.
We know how long they spend on each item.
Yep, yep. And so students are applying the old ICE Station kind of methodology to MAP. And, and so I think, one, if we could educate the teachers and administrators at those campuses using MAP that like, no, this is better, you need to tell the students. And so this administrator was able to train her staff and the staff of the students that, look, pointlessly going through is not going to get you anywhere. You, you know, and that helped and the light went off there and like, I can get through sooner if I answer each question correctly. And if I don't know, don't stress. It's supposed to make me fail 50% of the time. That alone helped the, prevent the apathy in that particular campuses, uh, MAP data.
Yeah, I will say, so we have trained every teacher and we have been in front of principals with the vendor and walked through the actual screener and the reports with them and their deans. And the OSL is also working with their, with principals in data meetings. I was, I just sat in one where they actually go through a protocol where they're looking at their data and having dialogue about it. So we're trying to do what you described, um, because we do recognize, like you mentioned, it's new. They've never done it before and kids walk in with old habits and those old habits work against them. So we're, we're aligned to what you're saying. We're actively trying to do that, yeah.
Yeah, and, and so just like, you know, today, that and last night, I was talking to my colleagues of North Texas Area Association of School Boards. And there are some districts who do not look at, boards do not look at any STAR data. All they do is do screener data. Most of them are on MAP because of the accuracy and the predictive nature of it. And, uh, um, the fact that we are, in, in those districts, do exactly what you said. They do the official screener here and then do MAP on the side and present the MAP data to the board. I, none of us, I think, on this dais would appreciate it if we overtest our kids like that. I think what you said, Dr. Raj, is true. The, the lack of local control to pick the best tool for our students is something that needs to change. We don't need that level of micro-management from TEA. And so whatever we can do to advocate for that in Austin would be a good thing. Seeing how we're going to be on a trip, maybe we should make a side trip from the Capitol over to Mr. Murat's office. Having said that, I, I am a defender of the MAP data and I feel my colleagues' pain that they feel like they're getting data dumped because it is hard, the fact that we have to use so many different systems with different types of data reports, to see the narrative that's plainly being shown here. We know, and I appreciate Ms., uh, Dr. Lopez's comment earlier that we do know that. We know, and I appreciate Ms., Dr. Lopez's comment earlier, that we do know that, look, most of our growth last year was from two A, two B?
Two A.
Two A. I had it right the first time. But the actual performance indicators were concerning. There was definitely a COVID loss. And we need, this is the best data we have as board members, to see where we are along the path in a formative way so that it's not too late to, to hold Dr. C. primarily, and then Dr. C. to his staff, to say, look, the data's not giving us the data we want or we expect to be seeing. What are we doing to change the plan? What progress measures are we, are we doing to ensure that the strategy you guys have developed down at the campus and individual classroom levels are being implemented with fidelity? And are the teachers using this data in the correct diagnostic ways in real time to make those corrections? And do they even have the proper tools in their toolkit based on the specific fine detail that they're telling about each individual student, what kind of intervention that particular student is? So that student has the optimal chance to succeed by end of year? And that's where I think the disconnect is, is those kind of pro, process measures and other feedback from you guys that, look, this is what, the, number one, it would help us as a board, when we get this, if it was nice color-coded, green, yellow, red, like, this is an alarm, this is a concern, but this is what we're doing about it. Here's the areas that it's telling us, which I appreciate Ms. Lopez giving a few anecdotal comments about, you know, why, you know, my big concern was second-grade reading because that's, you know, HB3 is there for a purpose, to help us make sure kids can read at grade level, like, grade three, and that's, we all know why that's there. And that's what we're, a big focus of where we, as board members should be, is are we on track for the kids to be where they need to be for third-grade reading and also in numeracy? And right now, the second-grade screener data is alarming, so I want to know, you know, what's the root cause there? And what are we doing to adjust the plan so that in these few months we have left, that those kids have every chance of success of us to blow out our goals on pure performance this year, not rely on two-way growth? I know that was a lot, but if you can answer or provide any color on that, I'd appreciate it.
You want me to respond now?
Yeah, yeah.
So I, the only thing I would say, say specifically around screener data that makes it challenging is sometimes there's the thought that you have a district-wide plan and that you would shift your plan. But really, it's more campus-based than that because what Spear needs is different than what, you know, than Miller needs. And so.
First of all, I agree wholeheartedly that that should be the approach. That's why the screener data is very valuable. It, it provides very fine-tuned prescriptions on what needs to be done down at a campus, classroom, individual child level.
Right. So if we were to make adjustments, what I would suggest that where the adjustments typically would lie is every campus has a playbook that's really directly connects the strategies they have in their building to affect the outcomes they're looking towards. And they work, the principals work with their supervisors to analyze our data and decide with their campus improvement plan and their playbook about what adjustments need to be working, what may need to be made, and which ones are working and not working. If there were adjustments that had to be across all the schools, that's when we would look at the system level. But generally speaking, especially when it comes to like these kind of data points, usually the adjustments happening at the campus level, and sometimes at the campus, it's actually within specific classrooms with specific teachers where they need additional support for whatever reason. So I'm happy to continue to collaborate with the Office of School Leadership to elevate some specific adjustments that might be being made across different campuses based on their reaction to the data. I would suggest that most of it, like I said, won't necessarily be at the system level unless there's something that's elevated that says it's a problem in terms of implementation across the whole system, and then we would bring that to your attention to think, just to be, give us feedback on, yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I appreciate that. And, and, you know, as a trustee, knowing that we have objective data that, you know, those five key areas in the instructional plan are being addressed with fidelity in each individual classroom, and if not, where are the problems and what are we doing to intervene with coaching or, or what other strategies need to be done down to the teacher level? And do they have the right interventions for any, each individual student to provide the right interventions at the student level?
Right.
And do those with fidelity?
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Thank you so much, Dr. Lopez, for all of this information. Thank you for answering all of our questions and kind of off-the-cuff or at the last minute, not knowing that we might be asking these.
No problem.
So we appreciate the information, and we appreciate the answers so very much. Thank you. All right, I think it's time for the superintendent's. There, there's not.
Okay.
Oh. Ms. Benjamin, is there anyone that wishes to speak on non-agenda items?
No, ma'am, no registered speakers.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin.
Thank you, President Fowler. And so I'd like to share some information about our school districts since our last board meeting, and you'll see on the screen. Congratulations to Ashworth Elementary, Elementary's Richmond G. and Shackelford Junior High's Terrence Williams for winning the Area Seven and Area Eight Spelling Bee. Both will now advance to the Regional Spelling Bee March the 7th at TCU. Each of the winners topped the field that included all our elementary and all our junior highs in the district, so congratulations to them. Last Friday, I, along with several of our school board members, had a chance, look at that, yeah, had a chance to go to Webb Elementary celebration of the new campus opening. It was a huge event, and I want to thank everyone involved for making it such a success. This is a major milestone in Arlington ISD in opening a new school, a rebuilt school. Yes, as you can tell, in addition to the Webb Wallaby mascot, we had a real Wallaby on stage with us that Ms. Fowler was, was not afraid of. I'd like to again thank Webb Elementary Principal Evelyn Navarro-Gasparr for spearheading such a successful event. The whole team at Webb Elementary is simply outstanding, and the kids were great, and they're enjoying their new school. And I thank, again, our community, our voters, our board, et cetera, to, for this opportunity to rebuild Webb, and soon Thornton and Berry, and then ultimately Carter will be rebuilt. Make sure you follow along on our looped-in blog this month as we celebrate Career Tech Education Month. We all know the huge impact that CTE program plays in our district. Courses like this offer and provide technical skills, academic skills, employability skills that give students a head start for graduation. So congratulations to all our teachers that are involved with our Career Tech program. Our Buy Students, For Students program, which got a taste of last year thanks to culinary students at Bowie High School, is adding a familiar name to, from the community to their program. Aziz, who owns Prince Lebanese Grill, as you know, is an Arlington ISD product and is working with our Food and Nutrition Services to create a new menu, a new menu item for our campuses. Right now, some of the students are lucky that they're participating and tasting the wings. And he's, he's very focused, as, as he always is, most of the time. Those should be on the menu along with chicken and rice recipes. So Prince Lebanese is the first locally-owned business to be part of the program that our new executive director of Food Services, David Lewis, has, has included. So congratulations to Prince Lebanese. And of course, speaking about Aziz again, because I can't get enough of him, we're gonna stay on this topic. And Arlington ISD product Preston Nguyen, who was an intern for Aziz at Prince Lebanese, is once again on the national stage. We've talked about Preston several times for his culinary expertise, and that's what we're doing again. Preston is a contestant on Next Level Chef, which is a big deal, and he debuted after the Super Bowl, and I'm happy to report that after the first episode, Preston is still alive in the competition. Yeah. So we'll all cheer Preston on, and someday maybe he'll come back and prepare something for us, I don't know.
Exactly.
But that, say one more time?
He was on Fox Four, Good Day.
Yeah, yeah. But prepare something that we can eat, maybe. I don't know. Anyway, so that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cavazos. Do I have any school board reports? Dr. Raj?
I just wanted to add, I, I don't know, I believe he would be the first Arlington ISD graduate to now have a Super Bowl ring, championship ring, in, a former student, Shane Michelle, from Omar High School. So congratulations.
Yeah.
I think that's pretty awesome. Of course, we did have another student on the opposing team that did not get the Super Bowl ring, but to have two students compete in the Super Bowl, that's pretty cool. So kudos to Arlington ISD there. And then I, I just wanted to put a, a note out for people to consider, as, as we all strive to be lifelong learners, this is Black History Month, and I would encourage everybody, if you are not familiar, and even if you are familiar, still, learn some more. Google Black Educator Leaders. And I think you, if you don't already know, you'll be amazed and humbled by some of the stories that you will find. And I, I say that because I, I have done that, and there are several names on that list that if it wasn't for teachers and educators when I was in elementary school that talked about Black History Month and said, here's, here's a list of people, go find the encyclopedias on the bookshelves, we didn't have a Google, and come back with a report. I still remember those names and those people lifelong and huge impact. And it's an impact on education in general, some specific to Black or African-American education, the, the setup of what is now our historically Black colleges and universities, their standards, and, and their approach to education. It began with some amazing legacy people, and I just think it's important for us to acknowledge that, honor that, and learn more about it so that we can share it with our kids. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. I couldn't agree with you more. Thank you for bringing that up. Anyone else? Ms. Secretary, do we have anything to report or to consider?
No, President Fowler, at this time, we don't.
Thank you, Ms. Secretary. All right, it is 9:25, and we are adjourned.